Motion to excuse Mr. Oberdorff for his birthday.
Happy birthday, second.
All those in favor of excusing Mr. Oberdorff, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the November tenth, two thousand and twenty-five regular council meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the minutes from November the tenth, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Is there a motion to approve the agenda for the November twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five regular council meeting?
I need to add facilities.
Facilities.
Who to approve the agenda as amended? Second.
All those in favor of approving the agenda as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, we got a lot to cover this evening. We'll try to make it short. We have a celebrity coming to Rossford.
Schaefer, he's here with his girlfriend Jamie. He's our latest hire. He started last Monday, correct? Yeah, last Monday. So this hire takes care of that void when we move the full-time interdiction officer. So as soon as he goes on the road, that program will start. Officer Schaefer came from the Wood County Sheriff's Office. To attract talent and, you know, for our lateral transfers from other departments. So thank you for that.
All right. When she has come in, she's filling in the back. Michael, come over here next to your wife, girlfriend.
Don't put any pressure on her.
All right, I'm gonna go slow now for you, but for me, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Michael Schaefer, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and that of the state of Ohio, that I will obey the laws and ordinances of the city of Rossford, familiarize myself and be obedient to the rules and regulations and orders of the city of Rossford Police Department, and faithfully serve the city of Rossford in the discharge of my duties as a patrol officer to the best of my knowledge and ability. So don't be guarded. Congratulations, Walter Moore. It was nice to meet you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Go ahead, Michael. Get you the star of the show tonight. Craig.
Ready? I'll take a couple. Ready? Thank you.
All right.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard, thank you.
Congratulations.
Welcome. Congratulations.
Okay, committee reports. Mr. Oberdorff is not able to be with us this evening. So Brenna, do you want to do facilities?
Absolutely. The facilities parks and marina committee met on October fifth, two thousand and twenty-five at three P. M. In attendance were Bob Toth, Rachel Tenny, Brenna Reynolds, Allison Murray, Toby Ledesma, and Kevin Heben. The park survey. Park survey went live on November twelfth and will have questions on park utilization by Rossford residents, particularly focusing on tot lots to guide future improvements to these areas. Marina boundaries. Part of the Marina North Wall was previously owned by a private citizen and then purchased by the city, and we are still in the process of working with the Corps of Engineers to change the county line on the auditor's website so that it reflects that the north wall is in Rossford rather than Toledo. Marina rules. Adjustments will be made so that dock rental paperwork and payment in full will be required at the time of rental to receive a decal. Boats will also be fined if they are left beyond the Marina closure date, and boaters will be given docks on a first-come, first-served basis rather than allowing boaters to select their own docks due to the confusion it causes. An updated letter will be provided to the committee before it is sent out to boaters and will also now require boaters to sign off on the agreed-upon rules. Goose waste at Veterans Park. The gooseinator has been purchased to help alleviate the goose waste at Veterans Park. This has been used successfully by other municipalities to deter geese from parks and will be operated by city employees beginning in February. Indian hills. Public Works is requesting proposals from contractors to improve the existing trail system and determine if we can install solar lighting in the parking lot so that no digging is required for wiring. Future meetings will also include engineering consultants to determine what kinds of equipment can be installed on the grounds. Hotels on Clark Sign. The permit for the work was delayed, so the footers for the sign will be poured in early November and work should proceed quickly after that. Public Works moved to Wales Road. Work on the office spaces will resume while the city determines if we can build the lean-to without a firewall. Pedestrian hybrid beacons. The ODOT field review has been completed, utilities have been marked, and the site is ready for the electrical feed when Edison is able to come out and complete that work. They are expected to be done by spring of two thousand and twenty-six. Veterans Park pathway. The pathway is complete and solar lights will be installed by U.S. Utility. Safety Services Parking Lot. The work has been completed and traffic stops will be installed. Gaddis is also going to reconstruct the roadway between Osborne and Hillsdale that was also damaged by the water runoff. Colony Court's public creek access. Tetra Tech is working on creating access to the creek on Colony Court during the catch basin work and is scheduled to continue as late into the year as weather permits, then finish in spring of two thousand and twenty-six. The meeting adjourned at three thirty-two P. M.
Okay, any comments or questions? Okay, I only have a few. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Mr. Oberdorff requested that I just read his minutes instantly.
Yeah, that's fine.
The recreation committee met on November eighth, two thousand and twenty-five. In attendance were Toby Ledesma, Larry Oberdorff, Michael Delangelo, Dan Wilborn, Terry McMike, Caroline Zokowski-Eckel, and Brenna Reynolds. Meeting was called to order at five fifteen. Capital improvements projects. The board discussed upcoming potential projects for two thousand and twenty-six, which include a new track floor at the rec center, vending machine at Vets Park, bleachers at the baseball fields. The board would like to see the results of the park survey to help guide their future plans. O.P.R.A. Game Time Workshop. Mr. Ledesma recently attended a training program with the Ohio Parks and Recreation Association. This program opened a grant opportunity which will need to be applied for by one nineteen. Programs. Little pups basketball has started. Spring soccer registration will open in January. Softball registration will open in mid-December. Open house survey. The recreation department is working with the facilities committee to put together a park survey for community input. The survey will be available starting eleven-twelve and can be done online or in person at the rec center. Meeting adjourned at five fifty P. M. Brenna, do you know when that survey ends? Is there an end date yet?
Ideally, December twelfth.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, we got some good news this week. Back in two thousand and twenty-two, former Director of Development Todd Odette completed a traffic access plan for the crossroads area. This plan helps identify how to increase drive time reliability for business and industry looking to develop in the crossroads area. Two intersections were identified as potential future projects to increase the safety and efficiency at which traffic could move through the crossroads area. Those intersections being Bass Pro Boulevard and Daimeling Road. City Administrator Allison Murray submitted two congestion mitigation air quality grants for two intersections on Crossroads Parkway in July of two thousand and twenty-five and Bass Pro and Daimeling Road. The city was notified last week that we were awarded both grants for more than two point six million dollars each for a grand total of five million three hundred and sixty-two thousand one hundred and twenty-nine dollars coming to the city of Rossford for both of those projects. Allison Murray submitted an Ohio Public Works Commission grant for the city's share of the Bass Pro intersection, and the city's grant submittal received the highest initial score ever to come out of Wood County OPW C Subcommittee. And that, you can appreciate how difficult that is because grants are very, very competitive in any marketplace, especially northwest Ohio. And to score that high against competing applicants is an amazing feat. It really is. Well, most of you know that the grant application process, regardless of what it's for, not only is it very competitive, it's very challenging. And we have fostered a culture that when we go and ask for a grant, we do the application not only correct, but very, very well. And they like to give grant funds to municipalities that are shovel-ready and have the horsepower and the knowledge to spend that money wisely, on time, and under budget. And that's what Allison, you, and Todd, and the rest of the administration have been able to do. And I can't tell you how much I thank you for that. This latest five point seven million brings the total grant funding to the city of Rossford in the last five years to just under twenty-five million dollars. And if you can show me a community our size with our resources that has been able to do that, I would like to see it. So that transitions into what I want to talk about next. We've been very successful in economic development, and it's truly been a team effort. Not only the people sitting in this room, but people like Rex Hoffman and Todd Odette and others, and we got Chuck from the county. I think we've done very, very good at that. You cannot argue the success. And again, it's been a total team effort. And part of the reason for that success is our friend Chris Heben, who, this will be his last meeting tonight, and I wanted to express my gratitude and thank you. You have been a part of and participated in over three hundred million dollars worth of development since you've been on council. And, you know, a hundred million dollar investment into N S G. You know, they're going on Amazon Facility Four here soon, with the first one being here in Rossford, and the others will actually be in the Rossford School District, which helps us as a municipality also. You've been a great sounding board. You've given great insight. And I want the citizens of Rossford to know how valuable you have been to anything and everything that's going on in our city and is going to continue to go on. So we wish you the best of luck. Please come back and we'll grab a beer or something after this meeting.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Allison?
Just quickly, the Rossford tree lighting ceremony will take place at seven P. M. immediately following this meeting, so we're very excited for that this year. Leaf pickup will continue until December nineteenth, unless we get a major snowfall before then. So they're currently picking up leaves, and they will continue until December nineteenth. And the city will be collecting non-perishable food items as part of our annual food drive. We are assisting with food for the holidays for thirty-nine Rossford families this year, so please drop your items in the box out front at City Hall between now and December the ninth. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Watcher, is there any correspondence?
I have three pieces of correspondence, Mayor. The first one is from Chief Soroka. At this time, we would like to take a moment to recognize and congratulate members of the Rossford Fire and Rescue Department for their exceptional service. In the early morning hours, around two thirty A. M. on Tuesday, November the eleventh, firefighter, paramedics, Ryan Goodrick and Mike Fox responded to a medical emergency. Following that call, the patient reached out personally to express his appreciation for the above and beyond care and professionalism he received. We thank these members for their dedication, compassion, and commitment they bring to every call. Their actions make a meaningful difference in the lives of our residents and reflect the very best of the Rossford Fire and Rescue Department. The next one is to Officer Brandon Dean from Chief Kitzler. Officer Dean, I would like to take this opportunity to commend you for your actions on the morning of October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five. The Michigan State Police were in pursuit of a vehicle that was traveling at one hundred and twenty miles per hour on State Route seven ninety-five. You were able to deploy your tire deflation device and disable the vehicle, which resulted in the arrest of the driver. Vehicle pursuits and the use of tire deflation devices can be one of the most dangerous tasks that a police officer performs. Your skill in the deployment of stop sticks to bring this dangerous pursuit to an end undoubtedly saved lives and property. Keep up the great work. Next one is to Sergeant Sean Skreptak from Chief Kitzler. Congratulations on completing STEP Supervisor Training and Education Program. It was an honor for us to attend your graduation on November seventh, two thousand and twenty-five in Columbus. Graduating from this program is the first step in your professional development journey, and I commend you for volunteering to participate in STEP's twenty-one modules that included transitioning to supervisor, leadership strategies, creating an ethical environment, developing subordinates, mentoring, dealing with problematic employees, effective listening and speaking, improved written communication, administrative skills, performance, critical incident, and conflict management, supervisor response to a line-of-duty shooting, incident management, media relations, and risk management. Keep up the great work.
Great job, everyone. Very much appreciated. Allison?
Chief Soroka wanted me to share a video, if that's possible.
Yeah. No pressure.
Sorry, it was up.
I'm just messing with you.
What happened to your waist? Doesn't work?
No, it's working. Just skip the ad.
A new use for a vacant building. Rossford Fire is using the old Rite Aid in town as a training course. Dominique O'Neil shows us how the training works and how it's being used. Members of the Rossford Fire Department run the course blind, placing their heads over their mask, assimilating zero visibility conditions. Battalion Chief Greg Yingling says this challenging exercise pushes their firefighters and prepares them for what they'll be faced with on the job.
Managing air supply, that's instrumental in firefighters do. And plus, it'll give them actually more confidence and more confident if we do go in, that confidence of us being able to handle our air supply, we can worry about mitigating the problem instead of worrying about protecting our air and being scared.
On average, it takes firefighters here eighteen to twenty minutes to go through each scenario.
It's to learn what to do once you come up against something that you have never experienced previously, and it's to help them stay alive in a hostile environment.
It just really helps prepare us and become better, builds our skills, makes us more well-rounded, and prepared better for our citizens.
Yingling started building this probably six or seven weeks ago, and he's had help from other members from Rossford Fire Department. It'll be open to other fire agencies as well to train. Yingling says as far as what's next, he'll be doing search drills where they simulate a search and rescue effort, where they do a mock version of the interior of a house, black things out, and then start searching for victims in this simulation. He says he enjoys being able to watch firefighters learn and elevate their skills.
I've done this for many years, but what I really like is watching our firefighters grow. They work hard, they practice it, they get better at it, they get confident, and that, as a chief, is a very good thing for me to see.
Reporting in Rossford, Dominique O'Neil, W T O L, eleven.
Great job. Okay, introduction of ordinances. Is there a motion to read ordinance twenty twenty-five dash nine eight by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading the ordinance by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Twenty twenty-five dash ninety-eight is an ordinance approving the annual appropriation measure for the year beginning January one, two thousand and twenty-six and ending December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-six. This is a second reading.
Chris?
Thank you. So this is the twenty twenty-six budget. And to give everybody a brief rundown, the budget totals about twenty-four and a half million in expenses, based on roughly twenty million in revenues. Of that amount, six point eight million is earmarked for public safety. That's about three point four million for police and fire operations each. We also allocated about one point four million for public works for the maintenance of our facilities, grounds, and streets. And we have earmarked five point two million for infrastructure improvements around the city, including pedestrian hybrid beacons on Superior Street and the resourcing of Highland, Homestead, Birch, Cherry, Hidden Cove, and Harbor Point. This will be the second reading. I do ask that it go for one more reading.
Okay, is there a motion to read ordinance twenty twenty-five dash ninety-nine by title only?
So moved.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Twenty twenty-five dash ninety-nine is an ordinance for transfer of funds in conjunction with the annual appropriation measure for the year beginning January one, two thousand and twenty-six and ending December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-six.
Chris?
Thank you. So this is mapping out the fund transfers we have listed in the twenty twenty-six budget. I ask that this go for one more reading as well.
Okay. Is there a motion to read ordinance twenty twenty-five dash one hundred by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Twenty twenty-five dash one hundred is an ordinance authorizing the award of a contract for the design of the residential road resurfacing projects for two thousand and twenty-six to Feller Finch and declaring an emergency. This is a first reading.
Allison?
Yes, the Public Works Committee worked very hard on getting the plan together for two thousand and twenty-six. They're going to do road resurfacing in two thousand and twenty-six, and we need to have those out to bid so that we can bid the projects early January, February, at the beginning of February at the latest. So Feller Finch can do that for us to the tune of sixty-three thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars. We'll get behind those and have them ready for bid.
Okay, is there a motion?
Did they do the design for Maryland, or was it a different company?
They did, Maryland.
Did we work through the things that they missed on that? Okay. I'll make a motion to suspend with the second, third reading.
Second.
Is there anyone in the audience that would have a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to declare an emergency?
Second.
All those in favor of declaring an emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move adoption.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five dash one hundred. Eckel?
Aye.
Tenny?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Heben?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Is there a motion to read ordinance twenty twenty-five dash one oh one by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Twenty twenty-five dash one oh one is an ordinance amending supplemental number twenty-one, the annual appropriation measure for the year beginning January one, two thousand and twenty-five, and ending December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-five, passed by ordinance twenty twenty-four dash seventy-nine. This is a first reading.
Chris?
Thank you. So this would add funding to our budget to remit to the city of Toledo per the revised economic development agreement that council approved last month.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to suspend with the second and third reading?
Second.
Is there anyone in the audience that would have a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five dash one hundred one?
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five dash one oh one. Reynolds?
Aye.
Heben?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Tenny?
Aye.
Eckel?
Aye.
Toth?
Is there a motion to read ordinance twenty twenty-five dash one oh two by title only?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Twenty twenty-five dash one oh two is an ordinance for transfer of funds for the year beginning January one, two thousand and twenty-five, and ending December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-five. This is a first reading.
Chris?
Thank you. So this would transfer forfeited monies into our law enforcement trust fund per the court order from the county.
Move to suspend with the second and third reading.
Second.
Is there anyone in the audience that would have a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move adoption.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt twenty twenty-five dash one oh two. Heben?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Tenny?
Aye.
Eckel?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Is there a motion to read ordinance twenty twenty-five dash one oh three by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Twenty twenty-five dash one oh three is an ordinance advancing funds from Fund Three Seven Oh Tax Increment Equivalent to Fund Three Seven One, TIF Crossroads Number Two for Debt Service Payments. This is a first reading.
Chris?
Thank you. So this is advancing funds from our yellow TIF to our blue TIF to cover debt service payments in two thousand and twenty-five. This is intended to be paid back at a later date.
Okay. To suspend with the second and third reading?
Second.
Does anyone in the audience have a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five dash one oh three?
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt. Reynolds?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Eckel?
Aye.
Tenny?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Heben?
Aye.
Is there a motion to read ordinance twenty twenty-five dash one oh four by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Twenty twenty-five dash one oh four is an ordinance amending supplemental number twenty-two, the annual appropriation measure for the year beginning January one, two thousand and twenty-five, and ending December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-five, passed by ordinance twenty twenty-four dash seven nine. This is a first reading.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So a few items that we're covering tonight. The first item is adding funds to several salary line items due to the new union contracts that we negotiated this year and a few new hires will need additional funding to make it through the end of the year. The second item is the portion of the forfeited funds that are due to the county. The next item is the advance that council previously approved in the previous ordinance. And the next item is the transfer from our seized funds account to the law enforcement trust fund.
Move to suspend with the second, third reading.
Second.
Is there anyone in the audience who would have a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move adoption. Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five dash one oh four. Heben?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Tenny?
Aye.
Eckel?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Is there a motion to read ordinance twenty twenty-five dash one oh five by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Twenty twenty- 2025-105 is an ordinance for transfer of appropriations from personnel line items to other line items, and other line items to personnel line items, thereby amending the annual appropriation measure for the year beginning January 1, 2025, and ending December 31, 2025, passed by ordinance 2024-79.
One more time.
First reading.
So, so this is a housekeeping measure we do every year. It basically allows us to transfer budget funds from one line item to another line item. It gives us more flexibility in our budget as we start to close down the year.
Move to suspend with the second and third reading. Second.
Is there anyone in the audience that would have a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? No?
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move adoption.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt ordinance 2025-105. Reynolds?
Aye.
Heben?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Echol?
Aye.
Tinney?
Aye.
Is there a motion to read ordinance 2025-106 by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2025-106 is an ordinance to amend ordinance number 2017-64 to extend the exemption from taxation of improvements provided for by Ohio Revised Code 5709.40 for certain parcels in the city pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 5709.51. This is a first reading.
Chris?
Thank you. So this ordinance would extend one of our TIFs for an additional 30 years. So just some background, TIFs are an economic development tool that generates revenue streams for local communities for infrastructure development. This TIF that we're extending here tonight, the blue TIF, was initially established in 2017, and the extension would prolong the life of that TIF for an additional 30 years. Just a side note, the schools have been provided notice that we are extending this TIF, and it'll have no effect on their funding.
Finance committee discussed this, and we recommend to approve. So I'll make a motion to suspend with the second and third reading.
Second.
Is there anyone in the audience that would have a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? Please state your name and address for the record.
Reagan Strong, 818 Lime City Road, Rossford, Ohio. Who benefits from this? I haven't heard a whole lot of discussion on who benefits from this and why that is a benefit to our community, so I'm not sure how it fits in. And I am curious on, on you guys expanding on most of your topics, to be honest. That's all.
All right, thank you.
I can say.
Go ahead, Chris.
This would benefit the city. So basically, what a TIF does is all of the property taxes that are paid within the TIF district, instead of that money going to the county, it comes to us. So it gives us the opportunity to build roads, install water lines, install sewer lines.
Plant trees?
Which makes us attractive for development, which brings more jobs to Rossford, which means higher income taxes, which means more services for the citizens.
Thank you.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move adoption.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt ordinance 2025-106. Owen?
Aye.
Tinney?
Aye.
Echol?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Heben?
Aye.
Okay, before we go to council, council remarks, I want to say thank you again to our friend and colleague Chris Heben, and I want to wish all of you a very happy Thanksgiving. Mr. Toth?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank our fire squad that showed up to my house Saturday night for assisting with my mother-in-law. They were very professional, didn't laugh when I cracked my jokes to them, so they were very professional, and I appreciate you guys every day. Like to wish Larry Oberdorff happy, was he?
Eightieth?
Eightieth? Eightieth birthday? And happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
I got a couple items. Thanks to Chief Yingling for creative use of the empty Rite Aid site. It's cool to watch all the things that happen there, and I'm glad we're getting use out of it. Look forward to more creative ideas. Want to give my condolences to Bob and Tina and their family. I want to encourage everyone to fill out the parks survey. That's going to help both the parks and the rec committees decide on future planning and asks, and so I hope everyone can take chance, take the time to fill that out. Nice job to Allison on the highest grant score. Your hard work and dedication, with that, we get to do a lot of cool things, and so it's greatly appreciated. And keep up the good work. Since we have an organ, just a reminder, we have an organizational meeting next week and Monday, and since we have an organizational meeting, maybe we can get new headshots of everyone to update the website. And I've had a couple people ask about information about council, like how long you've been on, what committees you serve. So I don't know if we want to write up little blurbs for ourselves, or how we want to do that, but just to put some extra information on there for people. They said when they, you know, so if they want a safety committee question, they'll know who to look for and et cetera. Reagan, we have a tree commission, so you should look on the calendar and find out when they meet, because I'm sure your input.
I'm a part of the beautification group, but not the tree.
Yes, there's a tree commission too. I want to thank Chris for his dedication and service to the city of Rossford. One of the more enjoyable parts about being on council is the connections we get to make, often with people that we wouldn't connect with otherwise. So thank you for your service. It's not easy to sit in these seats. And finally, and most importantly, go Bucks!
The tape, the tape stopped working.
Oh, wait a minute. The balance of power, I think.
I'll say it again.
The balance of power is shifting next week.
We'll see.
I don't know. I think I can count to four right now.
All right.
And I know Rach is a Hawkeye fan, so she's, she's up for.
All by myself, always.
We'll, we'll see if we can't make you an offer. All right, audience remarks.
You don't want to go.
No one else?
Rachel, let's talk.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Down to Rachel.
I apologize.
I want to congratulate Officer Schaefer on his induction for Rossford Police. That's awesome. Thank our safety services for everything that they've been doing. It's been great. I want to thank Chief Soroka for inviting me to the strategic planning session for the Rossford Fire and Rescue Department. I think it's everything that the committee that we formed for the fire department is looking for. It'll answer benchmark questions, it's going to set goals, mission statements, everything that we wanted, so I think we're going to see some really good movement on that, and thank you very much for implementing that. It was great. Happy birthday to Larry. Happy eightieth, that's so awesome. Thanks to Chris Heben for serving on city council. Public service is never easy, as Caroline said, but very fulfilling too. And I want to thank Allison for all the great hard work on grants also. It's never easy, and it's hard work, so thank you so much, and happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Mr. Owen?
Congratulations to the girls hoops team for an opening season win, and junior high starts this week, so good luck to them, both girls and boys. Of course, thanks, happy Thanksgiving to everybody, and a special thanks to a man I've known for a long time. Made it a lot easier to be able to sit next to somebody I knew on council to get started, and it was evident that your love for the city was, was, was known.
Thanks, Zach. Mr. Heben?
All right, I'm not big for speeches, so I just want to thank the citizens of Rossford for allowing me to serve for the past eight years. Thank you, Kevin, for all of your guidance over the past eight years. The administration, Allison, couldn't ask for a better leader. Chris, Chief Soroka, Chief Kitzler, Daryl, Toby, the rest of the folks, Kent Murphy, Rex Hoffman, Todd Odette, Caroline, we've watched our kids grow up together. And of course, you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your leadership, your vision, your mission. I know as long as you sit in that chair, the city's in good hands.
Thank you. Mr. Reynolds?
First and foremost, my condolences to Mr. Toth and his family. I also wanted to say congratulations to both of our safety service departments. It's pretty impressive to see what you both have done with the resources that you have, and I'm amazed every time I come to one of these meetings and hear about all the great[1764.37]